Good evening. I'd like to call to order the virtual city council meeting of the Lakewood City Council in Lakewood, Colorado, February 8th, 2021 at around 7:00 PM. If you're joining us this evening, your comment number is 1-253-215-8782, webinar ID 953-1566-5659, or you'll press pound and then press pound once again to join the meeting, star nine to request to speak, and then once you hear your number called out, star six to unmute yourself. I would also just like to mention that we do have a couple of comments on Lakewood Speaks. I want to thank you for weighing in via Lakewood Speaks Council. If you have not had a chance, please do so. There's two comments. With that, I will ask Mr. Rome to please call the roll.
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Gutwine.
Here.
Bida. Uh, he's, his box is here, but he just went mute. So we'll go to, uh, Skilling.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Labir.
Here.
And Harrison.
Here.
And we have a corps.
Thank you, sir. And just to let the record reflect, uh, Council Bida is here. And, um, so we are good to go. Before we go into the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silent prayer, I'd just like to acknowledge the efforts of the West Metro Fire Department as well as South Metro Fire Lakewood Police, our Rangers, and, um, the Mile High Youth Corps, all the different folks that participated in trying to put out the fire and succeeded in putting out the fire yesterday. That was quite a, quite a sight to see. So thank you to all of them. And, um, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance, we'll have a moment of silent prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have some presentations from our Lakewood Advisory Commission. Quite excited to, to see them. And I know they're excited to get in front of us. So for items four, five, six, and seven, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rome and he'll get us kicked off and we'll start to hear from our representatives. Just a note also, these presentations were on Lakewood Speaks in their entirety. So hopefully council certainly had a chance to view them as well as the community. Mr. Rome.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I am bringing over to your screen right now Kate McBride and Roger Freeman from the Lakewood Advisory Committee, sorry, Commission, and they're here to present tonight on civility in Lakewood during the COVID-19 pandemic. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Roger and Kate.
Thank you. And I would like to welcome Ms. McBride, Mr. Freeman. We are thrilled to have you with us tonight.
Good evening. I've, I've joined, I think, just in time. Can everyone see and hear me okay? Thumbs up. Uh, yes, we are extremely excited, uh, Kate and I to do the first presentation today. And I do assume you all have seen, uh, the presentation. So we'll be brief and then open things up for questions. I'm Roger Freeman. I've been a LAC member for a couple years now and, uh, Kate McBride is, uh, certainly can introduce herself, but is a chair of our Neighborhood Subcommittee. Um, just a few words, we're really excited about this project because it represents the, the best of what the LAC I think can, can do, uh, in, in supporting council's efforts. We know you're overwhelmed with so many issues of COVID. We looked at, you know, what can we do to be most effective during this time? And, um, first vetted this idea as sort of a brainstorming session. As you guys know, I'm, I'm a sustainability guy and you'll see me twice tonight. So you'll, you'll know that by the end. Um, that's my committee, but here I felt like, hey, we can do some things to, to try to advance the cause on, on the immediate crisis. And so working, uh, with Kate and her wonderful Subcommittee and, um, we quickly got your approval to, to look at recommended, uh, ideas for civility in, in Lakewood. Um, and the real emphasis I want to make here is this is not government telling folks what to do. This is not repeating what we have already out there in terms of safety rules, et cetera. What we're trying to do here is to build on a program that was, uh, as you recall, started some years ago about civility and interactions as we go about our daily lives. And obviously the pandemic here creates, uh, a whole new set of initiatives and, and pressures that, you know, we hope will abate over time. Um, certainly the vaccines coming might help, but these, these basic dos and don'ts are recommendations that we hope, uh, staff can run with, that we can work with and, and make it a theme that, that we build upon. Um, I'm not going to go through each of them. You've seen the, the video. Um, the, we, we, we wanted to have a sweet 16, but I think we ended up with 15 instead. Um, and those ideas I think are, are ripe for further, uh, vetting within staff and ultimately could be used to do something quickly. You know, we've, we've often been, uh, faced with the idea that the LAC and, and council have ideas, but how quickly can we, can we do something to make a difference? And, um, that's what we're trying to do here. So with that, we're open to questions and further comments from Kate, but thanks again for your attention and, um, let the discussion begin.
Thank you. Ms. McBride, you, would you like to add anything?
Um, very little. Thank you, Roger, for the introduction. Thank you, council, for, um, letting us, um, speak tonight and we look forward to answering your questions.
Great. All right. So this one was super straightforward with a lot of great recommendations and I think certainly seems easy to implement. There's just one thing that, that I had, you had mentioned maybe doing a, a month-long proclamation and that certainly makes sense. And I think we need to probably look, there are certain months that we do have things that could be similar. And I know even, uh, the Colorado Municipal League at one point had Cities and Towns Month, and I'm not sure if they still do that, but we would roll out a lot of information as well as we do the Day Without Hate with Jefferson County Public Schools. So I think there's a lot of things that we can try to maybe build off of as we look at how we roll this out. What month do we pick? And I, I would lean on, you know, kind of that part and, and staff to look. So that's all that I had as far as comments go. Um, I don't see any hands up. Are there any other questions or comments related? Yes, Ms. Gutwine.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to thank the committee for your work on this proposal. I think it's definitely timely, um, and a very important topic. So I appreciate that. And, um, I, I'd like to see us, you know, move forward and see how we can incorporate these things, um, in our community. So thank you so much for your work.
Counselor Franks.
Um, well, to build off of what Counselor Gutwine just said, certainly thank you for the work, but I do think it may be helpful just for the LAC going forward. Um, a lot of our community, um, hasn't yet, uh, gotten comfortable or doesn't even know about Lakewood Speaks. And so it might be helpful if you would have one or two summary slides that you could put up on the screen. Those, we all saw it, but I'm just what, wondering how many of the community did not see that. And so I thought it might be helpful if you could just kind of maybe quickly touch on a couple of the points just to give the community that's watching a flavor for the types of recommendations you made.
Good point, counselor. Thank you. Ms. McBride, Mr. Freeman?
Uh, yeah, we, we, the video did include a slide presentation and, uh, we could either bring that up now if, if council would, would like. I'm, I'm guessing I'm, I'm not the technological, uh, genius here by any stretch, but I think we can bring up those slides and quickly run through them without the full presentation, or we could just go to the recommendations and, and, and the, um, uh, the one slide there that contains the recommendations. I don't know if Councilwoman Franks, you had a preference about how we, how we make sure the community is aware of what we're doing here, but whatever you suggest.
Maybe, maybe just for tonight, um, just the one slide recommendations. It seems like that would be the most meaningful if someone, I mean, I know that's putting you on the spot, but I kind of thought maybe we'd.
No, we're ready.
Thanks.
I think we're ready. I, I'm, I'm speaking out of turn perhaps, uh, between.
Look at that. You are ready.
That always feels good. Um, uh, so these are the recommendations to, to, uh, announce a program that focuses on civility month and issue in, uh, multilingual and diverse fashion, a, a set of recommendations about how we can communicate, not when we wear a mask, not how we do it, not those types of things, but just ways in which as we, we all, uh, bear the burden of, of working under this, um, pandemic, we make sure we, we, um, uh, communicate as well as possible and, um, be as civil as possible to each other. And then if we can go to the, the slide that has the box full of those recommendations, I think it'd be useful that, there we go. Um, you can see some examples. Um, honestly, uh, one of my favorites is to keep your eyes off your phone. I mean, I think we all know that there's some different ways in which we have to interact these days and, and sometimes that becomes a bit of an issue in, in terms of feeling comfortable. So those are good examples. There's some embellishment in the text that, um, you know, gives people a little more sense of what these mean and, and how they, they would be, uh, uh, vetted. But, um, these are kind of a, a summary and, and that detail would be established as we roll this out on social media or on, um, and, and we do recommend that we do that plus posters and just ways in which businesses can pick up with these themes and, and maybe be acknowledged for, for, for sharing that, um, sentiment. So I think, I hope that covers what you asked, uh, Councilwoman Franks. As you can tell, we can go in more detail if needed, but I'll, I'll stop there.
Um, if I could just interject real quickly, could you go to slide three, please? Thank you. Um, the city had previously done a rethink, um, civility campaign. And just on this slide, you can see, um, one of the posters, the full report has, um, more of the assets, but just a quick example of kind of a cute positive, uh, message that could be put out there in a poster format and something the city has already done.
Thank you both. Appreciate that.
Yeah. And those were helpful. We used to actually have them in council chambers, uh, when we still went to council chambers and I, I think I used to have them in my office. So we, we did have those. And I think, yeah, something to continue going forward's great.
Great. Thanks, Kate. And, and I just note that that, that program was focused a bit on interactions that before council and within government. And this is just broadening those types of concepts, um, to apply in this context.
So I have Counselor Harrison and then Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I want to say that this is an absolutely fantastic, uh, idea. And I like the ideas that you came up with in terms of the quick lines like practice tolerance. I love the, the idea of don't look at your phone because all of us are guilty of that. Um, we listen for a moment and then when we kind of have the gist of the conversation, we're looking at that phone to see if there's something else. I think this is very good information here. Um, and I really appreciate the committee's time and effort in putting this together. I do believe that, um, if we could figure out a way to maybe put this on the website, uh, some of these ideas, uh, and I don't know where or how, I'll just throw that out, Ben, um, if we can figure out a way to do it, because I think these are good things to practice all the time. Um, and I just want to say thanks to all your hard work. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. I, I am very appreciative for your list. And on a personal note, I just want to say last week, someone extended some grace to me on a matter that meant a great deal. And when that happens to you all at once, you kind of realize, um, what it means to extend grace to others. There's nothing like having it come to you to kind of hit you in the head to know that you can do better. Thank you.
Um, in that regard, I, I do like particularly the sense of patience and grace with those who are serving us and on the front lines every day as we go out there because it's, there's some nuances to trying to communicate there that I think are, are hard to remember. So, um, that, that's worked into the equation and hopefully will find its way out to the community.
Great. All right, council. Anything else on this topic? Great. Well, Ms. McBride, I think we're going to lose you. Mr. Freeman, we keep you. And, uh, Mr. Rome, we have, uh, others joining us for the next presentation, item five?
Yes, I've added Andrea Jelfuso Getz, I probably said that wrong, my apologies, um, to help Roger for this presentation. And this one is about, uh, renewable energy mitigation program.
Fantastic. Well, welcome. It's very nice to see you. It's been a while. This is great tonight to see everyone and, uh, excited to hear about this. And again, just to reiterate to Counselor Franks, we all had the opportunity to see an in-depth presentation, which the community may not see tonight. So there may be some highlights that you might want to share if possible as well. And I'll turn it over.
Great. Thank you again. I guess I get double billing tonight and, uh, uh, that just, uh, reflects how incredibly encouraged we are to have a chance to make these presentations. Um, this, this, this has been a long and very important journey through a, um, not an easy topic that I, I believe has come to a, a wonderful conclusion. Again, you've seen the video, but, uh, Councilwoman Franks and other com- have commented that perhaps we should make sure that the gist of what we're proposing is. that perhaps we should make sure that the gist of what we're proposing is, is captured here, um, particularly for Lakewood Speaks. So, um, just going to do that briefly without going through the slides. Um, RAMP is a sort of an acronym for a program that goes well beyond renewable energy and looks at how can we take the buildings that we have in Lakewood that we all know and love and try to do better with efficiency, construction, and ultimately work with so many others who are focusing on sustainability to create a better future, both economically and for everyone in the community. This began three years ago with a proposal from a citizens group that was, was very focused on these issues. And what's been interesting for us is we've, as, as the LAC have wanted to work in lockstep and be cognizant of all the things that are going on in so many different respects. I won't summarize all those there. They're detailed in the, in the proposal. But between the Lakewood Sustainability Plan, the, uh, the work that citizens have done, the Sustainability Committee itself, and most particularly the Office of Sustainability, um, that you, you know so well, there's been progress made. So what we wanted to do is come back to you three years later with something realistic that fulfills the assignment, um, and, and that gives you some additional steps that we believe make sense as recommendations here. Um, if, if you recall, the assignment was, was pretty simple at the time. Go out and research these programs, these RAMP programs that are, um, propping up in different communities throughout Colorado and come back with a set of recommendations about what might fit with Lakewood. And we feel like we've done that. In fact, thanks to, to Bruce Rome. And I'll, um, introduce Andrea in just a second to talk just a bit more about this. But, uh, we were able to hand deliver a legible version of our research captured in a, a handwritten matrix. It was like old times. Hopefully everybody received something big enough to read that wasn't on your screen. Um, and that matrix represents a summary of the research we've done with the various communities. And that's part of why it's been quite a journey. So with that, Andrea, I want to recognize you as helping all along the way. Andrea Gelfuso is the chair of our, of our Sustainability Committee and, um, probably has a lot more to do with and to say about the, the matrix and the research we've done.
Well, fortunately, and thank you, Bruce, he was able to print it in a size that is legible for human beings. So, um, I'm really excited to see this laid out. So it's, it's a summary of, it's hundreds of pages of municipal ordinances from several cities. The one that we really do highlight is Golden. And you can see what's in here. Um, I broke it out by the name of the city. You can see the title of each ordinance. Um, what types of buildings does it apply to? Because there are different requirements for different types of buildings. And so, for example, Golden has, um, they have a, an ordinance that's about residential buildings. And then they break out the requirements as they apply to new constructions and to additions. Um, you can see what's the regulatory trigger for each one of these ordinances. When does it kick in? Our enhancement development menu kicks in at 20,000 square feet, but other cities do it differently. So I wanted to give you a lay of the land. So you don't have to reinvent the wheel. You can see what has happened in other cities. And I hope this is helpful. And then there's a link to each one of the ordinances. So that if you really did want to go read Boulder's ordinance, it's very long, um, go for it. So I'm hoping that this, it's not just, it's a summary. So you can see what everybody else is doing and it's a menu. So you can look at, oh, these are all the different components that go into these types of decisions. And that gives you the flexibility to choose what you think will work best for Lakewood.
And on that note, a perfect segue would be to focus on what has been done by the Sustainability Office. And this is not necessarily research or information that hasn't been compiled in some ways by Jonathan and his team. It supplements and dovetails with what's been done to help build the Sustainability Plan and to capture the EDU that, that Andrea referenced. If you recall, just to mention that in, in mid-2019, a, uh, initial version of this RAMP was passed, um, covering certain buildings of certain size, under which the, um, the, the building department would have a certain checklist and scoring system for, uh, for facilities over the 20,000 mark. It was a first start. If you recall, um, I'm probably the only one who watched the, the proceedings there, but there were a couple of comments, hey, come back to us in a year or two after we roll this out with, uh, some additional data and information and recommendations about how to go forward. So we have worked and discussed, um, with Jonathan and his team, how our recommendations dovetail with what, what he's looking at. Um, I don't know exactly how comments and, and his input has been factored in, but it certainly will. And our recommendations, um, which we, we can review as sort of a one, two, three, four, and then open things up to questions, uh, do provide a choice, options, flexibility. This is not, we should do it this way, but this is the steps that we think would make sense to build on what's been done, work with staff, and particularly make this economic. I mean, we all know that this is a difficult time to be imposing new obligations or new requirements. We know this is important. Sustainability is the number two, probably soon to be number one consideration that we're looking at as we make, we, meaning the council, making decisions. But it's got to be economically viable. The beauty of these programs is regardless of whether you fund it with this separate organization or, 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 or as part of the Office of Sustainability, it puts money in to develop efficiency improvements that ultimately pay out. And that is kind of the proven element of the economics that apart from all the environmental considerations is one of the critical reasons why so many different, um, organizations and cities are looking at these types of programs. So, um, I last, during the last proposal, we pulled up the slides with the request of one of the council persons. Um, I certainly think we can do that again and look at that. Um, uh, we had four recommendations that I want to repeat, if you will. I know many have seen the video, but also make a few comments about that. Um, we, we call the office that would administer this, the Office of Resource Efficiency. Um, it's mirrored after the, the Pitten County, uh, system that was first described to you nearly three years ago in, in the opening proposal. Um, but we do recognize there are many ways in which to, to, to make this as efficient as possible. I believe the Office of Sustainability has an, has some ideas for how to perhaps bring this in-house and have this an extension of what is done already. So we, obviously, we're, we're citizens. We're trying to identify the best ways to move forward. Um, it may well be that the, the office that administers this can be best and most efficiently set up, but we need, uh, within the, the current structure, but we're asking that, that, um, next step take place. Uh, we really feel it's important that the program be, um, applied to significant remodels and all new construction. We have gobs of data in the proposal that reflect what we all know that, uh, most of the new building going on now is, is, um, is, is in the form of remodels, particularly at the residential level. Um, and we do feel like it's time to capture new construction in phases. And in conjunction with the building permit changes that are happening, um, we asked for, or asked for, we suggested a task force perhaps might be the best way to look at, okay, what, how many points for this? What's realistic for this? How do we decide whether or not people can meet that criteria or perhaps just contribute to a fund in lieu of, of doing that? Those details need to be worked out. Um, we had suggested a task force, perhaps through the stakeholder process and some of the things that the Office of Sustainability already does, it could be done in that way. But that's the core recommendation. Um, and the benchmarking, uh, phrase in the last recommendation is important. Um, you've heard presentations from Jonathan's office about benchmarking. This would be a core part of what we are recommending, recommending as well. Try to get, take advantage of what we know and can, um, do to make the low hanging fruit a reality in terms of improving efficiency, looking at how our energy is consumed in our commercial buildings and trying to set some benchmarking programs. This would be part of what we would do here. This is not easy. It's complicated. There's a number of problems to it. And I'm sure you have questions. Hopefully that helps summarize for the listening audience as well as the council, what we're trying to do here. And with that, I'm sure Andrea and I would be happy to take a sip of water and, uh, open things up to questions. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gelfuso, do you want to add anything before we go to?
I did want to add one quick thing. So in 2019, the Trump administration's Department of Energy actually said that increasing energy efficiency is beneficial, especially for low-income families. Because I know we're all thinking we do not want to add responsibilities onto people who can't afford it. And if you saw the data, it really does show that people are staying in their homes and they're renovating their homes. They're renovating their homes also for sale. Well, by renovating their homes in an energy-efficient manner, you're going to increase the value of that home when people go to sell them. But in addition, you're also making it more economical for them to stay there. And so DOE said that, um, increasing energy efficiency is beneficial, especially for low-income families. And they actually looked at it state by state. And in Colorado, savings from increasing energy efficiency, including better lighting, appliances, insulation, would result in them saving on electric bills to the tune of 21 to 25%. So we're not just talking about adding a burden. We're talking about putting more money in people's pockets once we get this done. And how can we do that, uh, most efficiently?
Great. Thank you very much. And again, just to reiterate, sustainability continues to be in our top priorities moving forward. And one caveat to, to this piece is something that we may need more, um, probably input from staff as we move forward, is, is the fact that we still are under an older building code. And it's, it's a good time as we look to update to the 2020, I believe, that we'll be doing that in 2021. So we're kind of getting up to speed. So this is a great background for that moving forward as well. Mr. Bida.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation and your excellent ideas. And I can see that you put a lot of thought into this and we really appreciate that. Um, one question I had was the, um, the LoR program, the administrative piece. And of course, that appears to require some sort of, uh, creation of a government body or, you know, arm of, of the city, you know, creation of some additional government. And of course, that always presents a challenge in this, this time of, you know, our financial challenges. And so I was just wondering, are you seeing that administrative piece as a self-funded kind of, uh, program? Or do you have other thoughts on it?
Uh, thank you, Councilman Bida, for the, the question, a great one. Um, you know, we had originally suggested this LoR concept in part because of some taper advantages and the recommendations made, um, from the very start by the, the group that had proposed it. As we learn more and coordinate with Jonathan's groups about what's being done, it may well be that rather than forming an additional department within the city, leveraging and expanding our current relationships will provide, uh, just more of immediate impact and mitigate this, the cost that you've identified. So I think that, um, what, what may well happen is perhaps with different funding mechanisms, Enterprise Zone is, is, is one idea, idea that has been vetted. We'll take the LoR and end up having it as an extension of the current city department. The key is to make sure that it's as cost efficient as possible and dovetails with what's being done already. I don't know if that answers your question. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, thank you very much.
Counselor Gutwine, your hand is up.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I want to call you by your first names. Um, but thank you, Mr. Freeman, and thank you, Ms. Gelfuso, so much, um, for this phenomenal presentation. I'm really just so impressed with the level of information that you provided. But also, um, I mean, this is, this is a really massive, um, kind of policy document and just very well laid out, um, just very, very well done. So it, it just seems like the, um, output that we get from the Advisory Commission just continues to get better and better. So we're really, really thankful for your time and expertise and energy. Um, I, I'm really excited about this proposal. Um, I think that, that kind of the way that I've been thinking of it is that it's almost like a fee-in lieu program, kind of like, you know, for the rest of council and we've done park fees and fee-in lieu, um, as you get more and more energy efficient. Um, and so I think, uh, this, this is a really, um, great tool in the toolbox for the city of Lakewood. Um, I agree with, uh, some of the comments that were made. I think that we should, you know, move this forward and see, um, what staff, kind of how we can implement that. And especially, um, a couple of key points for me are, I think that it, you know, I appreciate what you just said, Mr. Freeman, about it may make sense to just, you know, include this within our own departments existing. Um, and then, you know, I'm going to be really interested to see how it fits in with our updated building code. Um, because I think that will really give us the opportunity to implement something like this program. Um, and then you also mentioned, you know, how, how it could fit into our Development Dialogue, um, enhancement menu. So I think that it will fit in well with a lot of the pieces that we've been building over the years. Um, so yeah, I'm just eager to get more information. Um, and then I just wanted to call out two particular points that I thought you made that were so great is just really appreciate that information about how much money, um, the energy efficiency can save for people. The 21 to 25%, that's, you know, that's a really big deal, especially right now. Um, and then I think that you added really great insights in talking about, um, remodels because our existing, uh, housing is one of our major energy users. And so, you know, this is just really important, um, really important work. So, thank you. And that, those are my comments.
Thank you, Counselor. I have, uh, Counselor Franks and then Counselor Labir.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Um, obviously for the community, just want to let you know that the Lakewood Speaks presentations, those don't come down. So if you did not get a chance to take a look at that, tons of great information. So go to lakewoodspeaks.org. Certainly you can look once it's moved over into the archive section. Uh, that's certainly important. Also wanted to make sure that the community is aware that, uh, we do on the Lakewood City website have an Energy and Water Resources Center area of the website. Tons of really good information there. So you don't kind of need to wait if you're in, you know, wanting to save water. There's ways to do that if you're looking at energy. Um, so certainly check all that out. And I can certainly attest, my husband and I, uh, we have an older Hutchinson home, uh, built in the seventies. And we have gone end to end and done all kinds of energy improvements. Um, we now have zero lawn. Um, we've done all of these things. And so it's really rewarding and really it does lower your expenses substantially. And since we're planning on aging in place, it's going to hopefully keep the house very affordable for, for us. Um, so I just wanted to make all those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may, uh, Mayor, just add that, that such an important point because some of us are fortunate enough to have some front-end capital invest in these types of programs. What Andrea said is really important. We want to make sure that we build funding and try to, to, to build on what we can to provide all citizens and all different economic strata. all citizens and all different economic strata the opportunity to find ways to fund these front end improvements so that they can reap the benefits that Councilwoman Franks has mentioned.
Counselor Labear.
Thank you, Mayor, and just want to thank our LAC representatives for being here and for providing all this information. I just wanted to support what others have said. You know, I think this sounds like a good program, a good opportunity to help out our community. I think another piece of it should certainly be an education piece. I think there's a lot of low hanging fruit with just getting information to residents about how they can, you know, enhance energy efficiency and whatnot in their own homes. I know, I remember back in the day, me traveling down to go meet up with my buddies in New Mexico and help out with AmeriCorps and helping out with energy efficiency in some of the most poverty stricken neighborhoods in the in the country. And, you know, that can obviously do a lot to help put money back in people's pockets. And so anything we can do as a city, I'd be very supportive of. Maybe this is something that could fit into our sustainability department right now or or sustainability group right now. And I suspect building fees is probably the way in which we help with a little bit of the funding side for staff to work on something like this. But but I also think as a council, you know, it's part of our job to get creative and think outside the box on how we find money to fund these things that are important to the community. And I think, you know, grass fires in February should be a reminder of how sustainability is important and we need to get on the ball with doing as much as we can to make this a more sustainable community and country and world. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just add to that comment, Andrea will attest that our little sustainability subcommittee, once a two or three persons, the subcommittee is now brimming with folks who have joined and volunteered. What do we have now? A dozen, Andrea. It's 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 really just reflects what Councilman Labear just said.
We can certainly attest, and I would echo, you know, this being a continued priority for sure. What I always say, whether it's, you know, this group or our clean energy Lakewood, we never are able to move as fast as as most would like us to. And I understand that frustration, but there are some realities as well. So with that said, counsel, I need some direction, some consensus as to moving this forward. We'd need to go to staff to really kind of dig in as these different points here. And we have, I think, a previous from our retreat, a previous sustainability request also. So if there's a consensus here, I'm going to look for kind of thumbs up, shake of heads, yes. I'm seeing some votes, okay? All right, well, clearly there's a consensus. And then I would turn it over to Mr. Goldstein to see if he needs any follow up or any questions that you need clarified.
I think so. I think at this point, you know, the LAC presentation and materials were really helpful. I think from a staff standpoint, we probably need to look into it. And as Mr. Freeman said, he's already talked with Mr. Wachtel and received some some feedback from staff that, you know, maybe creating a new department or or office might not be the fastest way to move forward. So I think with counsel's discretion, staff will kind of work within the general confines of what LAC proposed and then maybe come back with some ideas.
It sounds good. I appreciate that. And another great recommendation. And I would say in some instances, the city is very good at getting grants and those other types of dollars that can help push these types of programs forward too. So there's a lot of opportunity even outside of our general fund to do these sorts of things. Cool. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Freeman. Looks like you're wrapped up. And Ms. Gelfuso, you get to talk about something that's kind of been a passion and a grassroots project.
Yes, and I I don't want to go through the whole presentation again, but thank you, Honorable Mayor. Thank you for city council members for reviewing what was really a grassroots proposal. Some people approached me before I joined the LAC and were interested in that. And it took me a while to figure out how to move this through the process. But Kathy Rook was a citizen who, if you looked at the photos in the appendices, you can see these people are holding up this massive bales of this fishing line. And the problem is that it gets wrapped around birds. They're leaving the hooks and you can see like there's a goose with a hook hanging out of its mouth. It's also affecting people with pets. So two dogs had to be taken for surgery because they swallowed baited hooks. So this is a thing that's affecting our wildlife. It's affecting our ability to really enjoy the park today. I just picked up another old clump of fishing line and I'm really relieved to get rid of this, because every time I pull them out, I like try to, I almost get myself again. The larger one, it was two inches of water and I walked in the middle of the thing and this, the big bobber is 10 feet away from the hook. Obviously, something's going to come along and get snagged on that. Right next to this was the bait bucket. People are just leaving this stuff there. And it is, it makes it harder to enjoy the parks. There are people who are rescuing, a woman rescued a bat that was caught up in the fishing line. And Kathy sent me a new picture today of Bear Creek Lake where there's a tree and it's just festooned with all of this fishing wire, which obviously something's going to land on that. And it's ugly. And is that what we want our kids to see when we take them to the park? A duck with a hook out of its mouth? And so what I'm asking for is what seems to be effective. Everybody knows about the pipes, but those pipes can be used for all kinds of really disgusting things. And people don't always use them. Feet away from the pipe and trash, there's discarded fishing line. So what we're asking for is doing a blitz of signs in the spring when everyone can see them at the same time. So we have the photographs, you've seen the photographs. What we want to do is do a public education campaign so people know, don't leave it there. And if you see it, please pick it up. And it's pretty exciting because we have partners. Denver Audubon is interested. They will send out information to 100 of their volunteers and get some of their volunteers involved. Councilwoman Karen Harrison suggested we have an adopt a lake program where people can say, I will be the one and I will, you know, maybe I'll take a month, because we really do need people's help. Another thing is get the information where when people are buying the fishing line, they can see, this is why you should dispose of it responsibly. So if the city would be okay, we could put brochures and signs. And if it's okay with the retailers, can we get those signs so that the people who are buying this stuff understand the impacts if you just leave it on the ground? And it's kind of like the idea of a couple of years ago, everybody took their dog to the park and the dog pooped everywhere and everybody left it. Well, if you kind of let people know why this is a problem and change that conversation, you can, we can have a difference, like a shift where the community itself is helping to keep the parks clean, which will save time for parks people and make our parks better places to go. I'm going to remark specifically on Belmar. That is a wild bird sanctuary. There's not supposed to be any fishing there. They have these really small, and there's 11 of them, signs. And people don't even notice them. So what I'm asking there is, it is prohibited there. Could we put up some kind of indication that if you know that you can't fish here, and here's the penalty if you do? Because so people are reminded that, oh, that could actually be enforced against me. I know that the the city, these guys are really, really busy, but a reminder there that if you do that, that is actually a violation. I think that would be helpful. And then could we partner as well with Colorado Department of Parks and Wildlife? And when they put out their annual fishing brochure, if they could add some informational piece about, yeah, go have a great time fishing and clean up after yourself. So I'm hoping to get the community involved in protecting the parks that we all love.
Yep, that's great. And it's the power of partnership, which is critically important. And I think you named a lot of those folks who would want to engage. Counselor Vincent.
Yes, thank you very much for this. It's it's, and I'm glad you made the analogy with with the dogs also, because this is exactly when I was reading this is what it reminded me of. And I thought that picture where it showed that you were three feet from the trash can, which was, I mean, it's just, it's incredible. It's crazy. One of the things I want to suggest is, is I know that we used to have the people that were caught doing graffiti were then responsible. They they put them out there to clean up the graffiti. I think that's been put on hold since since COVID. But then we also, in addition, had them clean up the dog stuff from the parks, et cetera. So I was wondering if we could utilize them to do some of this cleanup as we get those people back in process or, you know, when COVID leaves and we're back to whatever normal is, the new normal, and let them do that, too.
I love that idea because you're kind of reinforcing the idea that these parks belong to all of us. And it's if you're doing something that is interfering with everybody else's use of the park, maybe you could help clean it up. But there are also dedicated volunteers who are happy to go out and do this, including the Audubon people. So we we have people, we just want to give them the tools that they need. Like, let's get those signs out there. That's what Jeffco Open Space said. They said when they used the signs, they had much better compliance, because you have to remind people that there's an impact. So I love that. And let's just get everybody used to the idea that this is not okay and we should all be part of helping to clean it up. But love that idea of using people who, you know, maybe need even more of a lesson.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, too.
I have to thank Kathy Rook and I have to thank the dedicated volunteers that you saw in those photographs, because they're doing the really hard work here.
All right, Counselor Harrison.
Thank you. What a great idea. And amen to the adopted lakes. That's what I would like to see go forward on this, because I really was, I had a citizen come forward and tell me about all of the fishing line that she was picking up voluntarily out of Cottonwood Lake and wondered if there was any way at all we could actually, because she figured that was not the only lake in the city that was having this problem, and couldn't we come up with some idea? She said she would be perfectly happy to, you know, walk the lake on a regular basis and get fishing line out of it. And I thought, wow, what a great idea. Because if it's in your backyard, quite literally, you're a lot more motivated to try to keep it clean and taken care of than maybe a lake that you only see once, you know, every six months. So I think if we did go to our local neighbors around the lakes and ask if they would be willing to be part of this, I think we will be pleasantly surprised that they would be very willing to do that. Thank you. What a great presentation.
Thank you so much.
All right, Counselor Bida, Gutwine, and then Franks.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. It's very well done. I do have a question. This goes to enforcement. I was looking at our city code and I thought where this might fit under is littering. It seemed like that would be the logical place, and that's 9.32.270. And, you know, what that does is it prohibits, makes it unlawful to leave any garbage, trash, cans, bottles, papers, or other refuse in the park. Does that include fishing line? I don't know.
It's refuse? Because what happens is when, and Kathy could explain this better than me, but when you buy a new thing of this monofilament line, apparently it's really tightly kinked in the beginning. And so what fishermen tend to do and women is they spool and spool and spool and they throw that on the ground. So they, that's refuse, right? What's the definition of refuse? Something that you throw away? They're also leaving stuff, I mean, if while you're fishing, that's not trash. But if you leave this in the lake, that's trash. So I can't speak to that specifically, not having read, like, what is the definition of refuse in our in our city ordinance? I don't know if you need to change any of that. But when you have, another question I have is, and when you have a, an area like Belmar Park where it's closed to fishing specifically because it's supposed to protect the birds and people are fishing there, that seems like a different problem as well. And that you need to tell people, not only, because there are these little signs, I didn't even notice them, I walk around that park all the time. But they don't say what happens if you do that. And I think warning people would be helpful. But I guess only if it's going to fit within, if that's actually a violation.
Exactly. That's why I'm asking, because I think it fits with your, you know, public information program is if you're going to put up signs and put people on notice, you have to put them on notice. One, that it's a criminal violation. And two, there are penalties, whether it's fishing where you're not supposed to or leaving this line laying around. And I guess my, the reason I asked the question was, I didn't know if our parks people had felt that they had the tools they needed to, you know, write somebody up if they, and I know it's not easy to to catch somebody, you're going to have to actually see them, see them discarding this this line and stuff if you're going to, if you're going to cite them for it.
I have seen, not to interrupt, but I have seen parks people at Belmar pulling people over for fishing there. And they do write them up. So that is a violation of some sort. But I would defer to the parks people to say, this is what it is, this is what the penalty is. I have seen them do that. It's just that they can't be there all the time. And I had somebody actually say to me, oh, the park guy told me that this is fine. I'm, I can do this. So I just think that extra information that it is a violation would be more persuasive than just this small sign that that nobody even pays attention to.
No, I agree. And I guess my, really, the point of my question is, do do we need any kind of action by council to tighten up our ordinances, our city ordinances, to make sure that our parks people have the tools they need to enforce this? Because here's how it works, you know? It's a few people, spoiler for everybody. I mean, this, I think that's a fair statement. You probably have 80 or 90% of the fishermen that are very conscious and do what they're supposed to. You got 10% that are not doing what they should. And those are the ones you want to focus in on. And if, you know, the parks people have the tools they need to cite somebody, you know, and fishermen are like this, they'll have their favorite hole. So, you know, it's not that hard to catch somebody because they're going to come back to the same place over and over, and it's going to be the same offenders. And so, you know, with a little bit of enforcement and making sure they've got what they need in terms of code to back them, I think that would be an important piece of your of your project in addition to making them aware of the law. But I just, that's really my question to you is, do you think we maybe need to take a look as part of the whole process of if we need to do any shoring up of our of our ordinances?
So, Counselor, let me, let me just interject. I think if this goes forward, that will be something that would be reviewed by staff as to all the different aspects and would, they would certainly be able to tell us if that is something that they need.
Okay, I'd like that to be part of it, the discussion. Thank you.
All right, I think I had Counselor Gutwine, Franks, Abel, and Johnson.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. Was the, one of the recommendations to include, you mentioned Jeffco Open Space and their signs with the images and that those were, they found more effective? Was that, is that one of the recommendations to update the signs with the image?
Yes, because what the volunteers have said is that in 10 years, they've seen one sign. And so, and Jeffco Open Space reiterated that they do put signs out and they saw that when they had the signs, they, that improved compliance.
Awesome. Yeah, I am, it's interesting because with recycling, Awesome. Yeah, I I am. It's interesting because with recycling, um including the images is also really helpful in making it more effective. Um and so uh I think that that's a really important point to just include the images. And I just I wasn't clear if that was part of the recommendation, but um so again, great work. Uh and I support moving this forward. Um it's the one other comment is just it's incredible, the volunteerism in our community and just really thankful for people that are willing to to do this work and thankful for for everyone's effort to keep our parks clean. So thank you.
All right, Counselor Franks.
Uh thanks, Mayor. Um this comment is more for Mr. Goldstein and Mr. Room. I wanted to make sure that I know that we um obviously in twenty twenty, a lot of the fishing tournaments uh were canceled due to covid, but as as possibly those are reinvigorated, if somebody could make sure to get that to Kit Nuland that maybe when we're doing those fishing tournaments, there's also an educational pamphlet or something that goes along with that, maybe on the registration page, there's a link to, you know, responsible management. That way we kind of tie in our programs with the educational piece and making sure we continue to propagate the information. And that's all I had.
Thank you. And I see Mr. Goldstein nodding. Uh Counselor Abel and then Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. Uh while we've come up with some great ideas that might keep uh fishing line from accumulating in our lakes, it's not going to do much about uh hooks in a duck's bill or uh on a goose's feet. The reason they ingest things or the reason they put uh hooks in their mouths or on their feet is because they smell like food. And they want to clean the food off of it and they get caught. Um perhaps Lakewood's uh reservoirs are not the place for bait fishing. Maybe we could consider artificial lures and flies only. The hooks are still there, but they don't have the attractant on them. They don't have the flavor and the smell that causes critters to want to uh eat the hook. So just a thought uh would seem to be very effective in keeping the hooks in the fisherman's wallet or a tackle box and out of the geese's mouth. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. Um, oh my goodness, it's sad to um have this kind of litter and behavior, frankly. Um your pictures are worth a thousand words and it's actually heartbreaking to see a goose with their feet both confined.
I know.
It, yeah. Um I would be tempted to free a goose's feet, and this is a strange question. If you're walking and you see a goose, you know, by the time you get the appropriate person there, the goose is gone. How do you recommend helping that goose and taking that line off of their feet? I don't I don't know if they bite. I don't know.
There are people, and these are the dedicated volunteers, who actually know how to do that. And I would be terrified, I'm just saying, but they are they've gotten used to doing that. And because it is, it takes a long time for the parks people to come, if you have someone who is capable of doing that, those people take care of it. So um you just have to be you have to have the luck to have somebody around who cares. But this is where getting more eyes and ears on this problem and getting more people who actually know what they're doing, I wouldn't I would not advise like somebody walking by to just do that. You could get hurt. You could hurt the goose more, you know, that. But if you have people who know how to do this, then they can make that rescue safely. But I wouldn't advise anybody to do that.
Yeah, I understand that. I personally wouldn't be afraid to attempt it, but I generally don't carry scissors either.
Right? Okay, you're braver than I am, Remy. Which is why I appreciate these people doing this. And they have been doing this for years. What they're asking for is, please, city, we've been raising this question for years. We've tried. Let's do something to get the word out. So they would appreciate your support.
Absolutely.
Okay, I don't see anybody else's hands up. So counsel, you want to advance this proposal? Certainly there'll be some some staff's time to find that and to figure that out. So, okay. Mr. Goldstein, do you have any clarifications? No? All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that. And it looks like we have item seven, which is going to be a presentation on kind of where things are at. And this was actually brought up at our retreat. There's probably some more background information that we can share also, so that the community can keep track of what's going on.
Hi there. This is Peggy Ralph. Can you hear me?
Welcome.
Good evening. Um I was gonna ask Bruce, and I can't see him. Can you bring up Casey Hensley um to our presentation, please? That'd be great. Um I want to introduce myself as the chairman of the LAC or the Lakewood Advisory Commission that you've just been hearing from. I am so proud of this group. We have some wonderful people involved. I've been involved for a couple of years now and I can't tell you how many great volunteers there are on this group and just Lakewood citizens who come forward and spend their time researching. Um the Lakewood Advisory Commission, for anyone who hasn't heard of us before, exists to help um city council with different research projects, questions that they have. Uh they send them over to us and we spend time researching them. We have three different committees that we use. Um one is called Sustainability, which you heard from tonight. Uh the other one is called Neighborhoods, and then we also have Civic Awareness. Um those three committees um have lots of presentations ready to go. Uh we've been waiting for quite a while since last March uh to start presenting. And I can't tell you how grateful we are to be on tonight and to be able to get some of these uh through and have you look at some of the great research and work these people have done. Um we sent you a spreadsheet that I hope everybody has. And if you'd like it brought up, I think Bruce can put that up on the screen for you. But I can go through some of the presentations that we have worked on and some that are ready to go. Uh some of them aren't ready to go, but like we said, we're going to do an update and give you the progress report on what we're doing. Um if you want to see the spreadsheet, you can raise your hand and I'll have Bruce bring it up. But I'll go through the first one that we had on the spreadsheet that I had forgotten about. It's so far back. It was called Car Free Day. And Car Free Day has already been presented. It's on the spreadsheet. It's not being presented, but um it was presented to city council. It did go to staff. But since March, that's kind of, I think, been shelved and we haven't really seen anything from it. But that has already been presented to city council. And then I sent a letter to you all today about municipal broadband because I was a little confused about that one. I know we did a really nice presentation about that. And it was actually part of the ballot in November of twenty nineteen, and it did pass. And so uh I found out that was just the first part of the municipal broadband broadband project. And there's two other parts. And so we wanted your help um to decide if we wanted to continue with the other two parts of municipal broadband. So I'll have you uh ask questions about that and bring that up. The other one you saw tonight was RIMP. So that one's now presented. We're excited that that went through. That one's been waiting the longest. Um so I'm excited that went through. Another one's called Community Gardens. And it's two point oh because we already did a community community gardens number one. And this one, I understand, has been paused. And I'm not really sure exactly why. That's why I brought Casey Hensley up because she's my co-chair. And we just started this job in January, so we're both new uh being co-chair and chair. And hence, Casey, do you want to mention anything about the community gardens?
Oh, just my understanding was that it was on pause with all the covid uh stuff that happened and it just hasn't been revisited.
Good. Thanks, Casey. Okay, um the fifth one we had on the list was called Unsafe Driving. And this was a grassroots project that was brought up by a member who is now not on the board anymore. Um he timed out. His his session ran out and his name was Rick Ash. And he was really adamant about trying to get people to do better driving habits and be safer in Lakewood. We really need that. And that proposal is ready. And we can't wait to put it in the can and have you see it. Uh but they would really like to be in person. And so I told them tonight I would ask and see when we're going to go back to actually being in person uh with city council. So I I don't know what the answer to that is, but you guys can maybe help me out with that. Um they would like to wait and go in person if it's not much longer than, say, April. But if if it's longer, we'll put it in the can and let you guys view it. Um because it's got great material. It even has a mascot for the city. It's it's great. We love the presentation. Um so we'll wait on that one to get an answer. Um we have one that's ready to go called Kids and Seniors. It's uh kids helping with seniors and it's it's a great program. They're ready to go. They're going to record and have that ready for you as soon as we can get back on to city council again. Um we have an anti-idling program that's also ready to record and go. Uh the civility in Lakewood you saw tonight. We also have one called Covid nineteen and Small Business, which is very timely. Um they presented at our executive meeting a couple of weeks ago and we sent them back to do a little bit more work. So we'd like to present them uh in March if we could get them up there. That's a real timely one. We'd like to have that one put forward. Uh fishing line we did. And one that's on the hot plate is the illegal fireworks. That's been given to our uh civic awareness committee and I'm excited to see what they come up with. Um so we're going to be working on that one. Uh that one's in committee still. Um Neighborhood Links is a pro- a group that is doing uh a research on how to link our bike trails and our walking paths throughout Lakewood and doing research on that. And I think that's a real important project. So that one's still in committee and we're waiting for more progress on that. Um we do have another one that's not on the spreadsheet. We have an ad hoc committee that has been uh going since last March and it's all about diversity. Diversity on our LAC committee to start with and then diversity within our city and governments and all kinds of things. And they're ready to record and also come up as well. So we've done a lot of work. There's a lot of things ready to go with the LAC and we're so grateful to be on tonight and have everybody in Lakewood see what we do and help you guys out with your research. And if you have any questions, uh let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Ralph. Ms. Hensley, is there anything you'd like to add? Okay, it's nice to see you both. Let me just kind of tackle a couple of the couple of these. I don't see any hands up quite yet. Yeah, certainly the Car Free Day, you know, most of our events were put on on hold last year in entirety. And now I think you're also seeing the the fact that we've had to see substantial cuts to our staffing. All of that is just affected in in every which way you can imagine. So um that also plays into not being able to have gatherings. That was part of the idea with Car Free Day was people being able to come out and get together and enjoy one another. So um keep that in mind. Counselor Abel brought forward at the retreat uh some some more things related to community gardens. And certainly that was being folded into our work plan. So um you'll be probably seeing more of that and maybe uh the community resources can identify where you are at with kind of the goals of council and see if those come together. Um a couple of council members are certainly interested in your ad hoc committee on diversity. And um I think maybe would like to learn more. And so that was Counselors Vincent and Gutwine and and all of council, I think, is supportive of that as well. But there were some specifics to that. And then broadband, we did get the first one done and the second one done comes with hundreds of millions of dollars potentially for the different rollout. So I think that that might be a larger policy discussion for council as we go forward because of where we are with our goals. Now, infrastructure is one of our goals. And so I I think that could be fit into it. But the realistic thing is a community like Fort Collins or Longmont that have their utilities have been a little bit more successful. But I think Fort Collins went out and it was over two hundred million. I think at least for them to start rolling. So there's a big price tag, but certainly great stuff and and you know, that education of the community of opting out was a big piece of that. So that's a quick kind of overview of some of those ones that you punched on. I have uh Counselor Harrison and then LaBir.
Thank you. Um really good um information. It made me smile when I looked at the very some of the very first um plans. You know, um the old ACIC actually did one of the very first projects we did was whether or not we should do the tree lighting. Um and it was, we decided and recommended that we should. And son of a gun, it's been going for several years with the exception of this year. We didn't do it, but we have been doing it for a lot of years. So it made me smile and I really liked seeing this long list of um items that you've accomplished. One of the suggestions that I have maybe for council is if we choose one meeting once a month that we would begin at six thirty rather than seven o'clock um where we could hear these presentations from LAC. Um and then um until we get caught up and then we can decide if we want to continue doing that. But if we did it once a month only for thirty minutes early, LAC would know that they have to have their presentation pretty tight and be able to present it within that thirty minutes. Maybe we could get caught up. Um and uh because I know that they're working really, really hard, doing excellent work, and they shouldn't have to wait and have it shelved for a really long time. So um maybe we could give some consideration to that. I ask with uh bated breath. I hope that you will. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. And I I may look to the rest of council. I thought we did discuss that and that was something that council did not want to go forward with at the time was meeting earlier for these, but I could be wrong. Counselor LaBir.
Yeah, uh thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to piggyback on the uh broadband comments. I know our uh our clerk, Ms. Room, uh brought it up and then also our LAC people brought it up. I think the reason we went with the first piece, which was to send it to the voters and to talk about the one fifty-two exemption was because it it seemed to be, you know, why would we do any research or studies or any other thing in that space of broadband if we don't even have the legal authority to do anything in it in the first place? And then there was a question about what kind of research or studies or any of that kind of stuff can we even do legally uh because of the preemption in the first place? You know, you can't spend certain amount of money um on looking into that or uh because of the preemption. So so I think the idea was let's get the preemption if the voters want it. And then from there, we can just sort of take the the next steps. And while I don't suspect we'll ever have uh a municipal broadband uh, you know, fiber in the ground that we own uh necessarily. I don't I don't expect that anytime soon, if ever. I think the other piece of it was uh if we have this one fifty-two preemption piece uh, you know, order taken away, then we also open ourselves up for to potential partnerships and opportunities with with other companies uh that might come. Uh you know, certain companies are partnering up with municipalities in these cooperative agreements where the user is actually paying for the infrastructure. And uh in the city, it doesn't actually, it's sort of cost neutral. Anyway, the point is is the question though becomes is there a reason to do this? What's the quality like? What's the coverage like? And what's the accessibility like? So I think I think the tertiary sort of broad overview thing that we should be looking at, if anything at all uh in this space is just can we get a general assessment of how well Lakewood's doing? You know, how's our quality? Uh who are the providers? What's the coverage like? And are there issues with accessibility? Are there people being left out? Because I know, for example, Comcast, you know, they have a uh program to help with low income uh people to be able to get access to the internet. So that those are the kind of questions. So I I guess if we're going to do anything else, uh move this forward with the LAC, what I would say is let's just get a little bit of broad sort of research on, you know, what's the state of broadband in Lakewood? And then I think we can go from there. That would be my next step if if we're going to do one. Thanks.
Okay, so counsel, hold on to that thought and see if you want to go in that direction. And I have uh Mayor Protem Skilling and then Counselor Gutwine.
I would uh my two cents on this, I would like to prioritize the unsafe driving and the small business impacts of the covid nineteen. One, you're talking about lives, the other you're talking about livelihoods. And I, I um, I think April is probably too aggressive is when we're going to be all back together. And I, I think I would like to hear that proposal sooner rather than later. And I don't know if that's going to be a vision zero type thing or some uh, various ideas will come back. I think we should prioritize that. And then obviously the COVID small business impacts. I know that other towns, uh, not only in Colorado, but across the country are doing things to whatever they can to incentivize people to shop, to do business in their town. Uh, and I'm sure that the LAC has uh, many ideas and while the city, you know, we're struggling like a lot of others are, but you know, we could get funding from the feds as we have in the past. We should be ready to implement these programs. Um, if there's some great ideas, which I'm sure there are, we might as well get out in front of it. So I would like to prioritize those two, if possible, when we talk about presenting to council. And I am more than happy to start at 6:30 or even six, if need be, to get those done sooner rather than later.
All right, Counselor Gutwine?
Thank you. Um, thank you so much, Ms. Ralph, um, for that presentation and for going through the status of all these projects. It's, it's incredible how much work uh, the group has done over the last year. So please pass along our thanks um, from all of council. Um, and I just, uh, I also am really, um, it's great to see that document that shows all the, you know, all of the past um, projects. And I would love to, if, if we can have this um, kind of regularly updated and if, if we, if it's possible for council to get this um, kind of on a regular basis or annually. Um, I don't know if we, if that's uh, possible. Uh, Mr. Goldstein, um, great. Okay. Or I don't know if it belongs on our website. Um, and then regarding the timing, um, this is something that we did talk a little bit about in the uh, retreat, just you know, we really want to value our, our commissioners' time and how much work you've put in and want to see these on a timely basis. So um, I'm happy to, to meet early if that's the way we do it, if that's what we need to do. Um, I think it would be great if we could set some kind of policy and expectation of just how often we're going to see these so that commissioners know that we'll be doing this on a timely basis. Um, and then I, I agree about the prioritization. Um, that said, you know, I would also really love to see the diversity proposal. They're all, you know, they're all certainly important. Um, so thank you. Thank you to everyone.
So, Mr. Goldstein, I'm just going to go to you real quick as we had talked a little bit earlier about this. And so there are some things on the staff side that you're going to do to uh, help get information out and keep the community up to date.
Yeah, I, I think we're looking at uh, putting all the LAC information on the website. Um, so we'll have this, this spreadsheet um, that we shared with you all. Um, past presentations, if we have them, uh, past reports, uh, kind of a LAC page uh, to to give it a higher profile on the website, also as a resource to council. If you want to go back and look at a past report, you don't have to go through email or through past meetings to track it down. And we're, that's something we're already working on, not from a staff standpoint.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Gutwine, your hand is still up. Are you, is that just me? I didn't lower it?
Oh, I just wanted to respond to that, if that's okay. Uh, just a huge thank you. Um, that's, that's exactly what um, you know, I was kind of hoping for and that's phenomenal. I think it'll be a really useful tool for our community. So thank you so much.
All right, I have Counselor, uh, Bida Johnson and Franks.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, prioritization wise, I, uh, I'm agreeing with uh, Counselor Skilling on this. We have a traffic situation in, in our ward with West Jewel. And so the quicker we can uh, get that, take a look at that, it may have some impact on our ongoing problem. So I agree with that priority. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson and Counselor Franks.
Thank you. Um, I too support Mayor Protem's priority list. I agree with what she said, uh, counselor. And meeting early, one, one meeting a month, I'm fine with that. Basically, the message that we give to that committee is that we uh, value their time and their efforts and their work. By not hearing them, it, it doesn't sound like we really value what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franks and then Vincent.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Paul. Um, certainly wanted to thank everyone for the hard work and thank Ms. Ralph for the, the nice update. Um, do support uh, Mayor Protem Skilling's prioritization list. Um, one that I would like to add, I know that Counselor Gutwine added the diversity. We received, in my view, a record number of fireworks, um, complaints and emails and that. So I want to make sure that we have enough lead time to see if there's anything that we need to do legislatively. So I just want to make sure that one comes to us in enough time. Um, it may not, I mean, obviously, uh, you know, with our calendars, but fireworks was a big deal uh, last year. And then also, um, at least in the short term, I could support a, a 6:00 PM start time. But as a full-time worker, I could not do that uh, over the long haul. But with the Zoom meetings, it makes it where there's no commute time. And so at least while we're doing that, I would support a short-term 6:00 PM start time to work through our backlog and get caught up. Thanks.
All right, Counselor Vincent?
Yeah, I agree with the prioritization. Um, but I'm also very interested, obviously, in the diversity output too. Um, I know that we had talked, excuse me, at our meeting about some parameters around that. So or some additional information. So I don't know if um, I could reach out to the LAC? Maybe just to go over what it was that we had talked about there? Um, just to give you that piece of information?
Yes, certainly. Um, and, and I would defer to Mr. Roman in the chair, but I, I think it would be helpful if there is clarification on the diversity which was brought through the council request, then that would be helpful.
And then I'll go through Mr. Roman then.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so a couple of things here real quick. One, one thing is I, I am hesitant on the early start um, for a lot of different reasons, but there's also a staff component to that. And so I, I think if we are trying to get caught back up, which we are and you know, keep in mind, we shoved everything aside last year. So that has really led to that. And there's also been a lot of changes in the clerk's office. And so now there's hopefully some more continuity and there's, you know, been some, some retirements and turnover. So I will certainly, of course, support whatever the group wants to do. But I think if we can continue to schedule these to be heard would be a, a better route for, for the fact that we do have folks who are working full-time as well as staff. Um, is there agreement with the prioritization? I would just also say, uh, Madam Chair, that I, I wouldn't be optimistic that you're going to be seeing us back in person. So I wouldn't hold back anything. That's just going to have to be the reality. And um,
Okay.
You know, our body is a big body and you know, some of the folks haven't uh, could be you know, needing or, or in that category to have vaccinations. And so we're just going to have to keep waiting uh, as we move forward. So please don't depend on that. Um, so, and counsel, the prioritization, we certainly heard the safety. Uh, fireworks, forgive me, Mayor Protem, what were the other ones?
The COVID small business.
COVID small business. And a diversity. So those are kind of some of the parameters.
Correct.
Is there consensus for Counselor Labires to uh, go forward with kind of those secondary and honestly, you should be able to get those pretty easily from our providers. It's, it's something they send us every year. So Counselor Labire, you, you probably do have that, but if that's something the LAC wants to take on as far as those maps and who's got it, who doesn't? Um, one, is that something you'd want to do? And two, is that something the council wants to send? Okay. Uh, Mayor Protem and then uh,
Well, I, I think it's a decided question from way back. Uh, we did, we, we did give them this assignment. I don't think this is a priority right now. As I said, I think the lives and livelihood are more important and I agree with the diversity uh, task as well. But I, I think that uh, it would be uh, expected of us that since it did pass to at least talk about, again, you know, just like with the, um, with the exemption, it's not as if we we have to do anything, but we need to have information on it. I think this is something that the LAC is um, what they should be good at doing and what they've shown uh, uh, in the research we've seen tonight. And the thoroughness, I'd look forward to at least hearing what those options are. I'm not in any rush to hear that with all of the other obstacles and things that are facing us and our residents. However, we did make that commitment some time ago. And there are people that are very interested in it. So from the information gathering standpoint, I think they should finish the assignment. Um, just after some of these other prioritized ones.
Good. Uh, Counselor Gutwine and then LaBere.
I actually have a question um, for Counselor Labire. I, is what you were discussing to repla, did you have in mind to replace kind of this part two or were you kind of reframing the, the part two that we originally had?
Well, I think, you know, I was sort of rephrasing it because there are a lot of not experts on council who were talking about this issue to start with. So that's kind of why you have a disjointed sort of list of asks to the LAC in the first place, right? Um, but one of the things that is in there is a feasibility assessment. I think we're way, you know, I think we're yeah, you know, I think a feasibility assessment is not, uh, we're not in that place yet. You know, I don't even think we have a good assessment of what the need, is there a need? I mean, that's the big question right now. We're, we're at that phase. So for me, I just kind of was throwing those other things out of the table and saying, what's the overview? What's the lay, lay of the land look like? That's what we should know. And then we know if uh, you know, what we should be looking for. Do we need to be looking at municipal broadband? Or should we be looking? Maybe there's just one section of the city that is a half a mile square on the west side that doesn't have good service or accessibility or whatever. And that's the one area we need to solve a problem. Well, now we know, now A, there are partnerships out there or there are groups out there that deal with uh, these type of areas that are maybe are disconnected off the grid, need satellites instead of wires, you know, what? Those kind of things. We don't have any of that information. You know, that, that's what I'm saying. Just having a good assessment of kind of it, what the needs are. But I also, I agree with everything that Skilling said, uh, Councilman Skilling about. You know, I don't think necessarily this is the number one priority, but then again, I don't know. I don't have that assessment. I mean, we're all living in a digital age right now and we're all talking on Zoom and there might be a corner of the city that has nothing, no ability to do this and they have to meet it in the park. I don't know. So hopefully that helps clear it up.
So, so do I have the floor now or, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, thank you. That does clear it up. Um, I think, I think it does make sense to um, finish this proposal. Um, kind of the reason that I was asking that is that I think that um, potentially it might make sense for our city to have a long-range master plan about broadband and accessibility and all of those things. Um, like Counselor Labire mentioned, you know, things are moving more and more to internet and schools are, have been all online for certain parts of the year and um, I think it's going to become more and more important in our businesses and just our everyday lives. So for now, I think it makes sense to continue and finish this question. Um, again, not, not the highest priority necessarily. Um, and I think that yeah, we, we just, we may want to um, explore even if we don't look at doing municipal broadband, just what our gaps are, almost like a bicycle master plan where we're looking at connectivity and just ensuring that everyone has the connection that they, that they need.
Okay. So it sounds like is there consensus to continue forward with the broadband? Okay. All right. So we'll continue forward there. Um, and is there anything else, Madam Chair, Madam Co-Chair, that you need from us right now?
No, I think that's good. And I think your priorities are, are helpful. I appreciate that. And it looks like we're right on track with what you need. Um, so our unsafe driving is ready. Um, the other ones that you talked about, about diversity, they believe they're ready to go as well. But I'd like to hear what Ms. Vincent, uh, Councilman Vincent has to say. And see if we've covered what she's concerned about. That would be good. Um, and the small business COVID, we are really wanting to get that on as quickly as possible. So we're definitely on track with what you guys are looking for. So I'm excited about that. Uh, this committee is a great committee. I'm so glad that we got to showcase tonight and show the city of Lakewood what we're capable of and what kind of people we have living in Lakewood that are just so polished people, just professional, wonderful people. We have 25 on the committee. We have room for 30. So if there's someone out there who feels like they would like to join our committee, please do uh, go on the Lakewood website and look for LAC or Lakewood Advisory Commission. And we'd be happy to have you join our meeting and see if we're something that you'd like to be part of. Thank you again, Mayor and council members. I really appreciate the time this evening and I know the committee is thrilled. They're so happy that their presentations were heard and everything's moving forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Hensley, you had your hand up or were you just waving goodbye?
I did. I was actually going to ask, uh, just to clarify for the broadband. Did you want to go with it as it is already assigned or add in more of the question of what is the state of broadband in Lakewood?
Yeah, I, I kind of heard two things. I heard as, as designed, right? As what you have already going forward. Then I heard an, another request. Um, you know, to be honest, I, I don't think the secondary request as far as coverage is going to be very hard. Again, I think council gets that from the different operators every year. So it's probably pretty easy to find, but I guess that's up to council if you want to go as described or do you want to change it? Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, you're saying that we get a, a notice every year about connectivity um, from the different providers? Is anybody else missing that one? I don't remember getting it. Um, maybe, oh, thank you. Someone else is shaking their head also that you've not received it. Maybe you get it, Mr. Mayor, but I'm
My apologies. Maybe it comes to me through Comcast.
That's what I'm wondering. So it may be something that it needs to go to LAC. Um, because I haven't seen anything like that. Um, maybe they need that information and then maybe with that information, they can come back to us and say we don't, we can give you this, we'll work on this other one. That might be the, the way to, to frame that. Um, take it from there. Thank you.
Counselor Labire?
Well, thanks, uh, Counselor Harrison, uh, for making that, bringing that up. I mean, what I was going to say is I you know, I, I've seen a lot of different things from municipal uh, groups. Lot of it's marketing pieces about what they do because they're trying to tell us that they have the best service. What I was thinking is more comprehensive and sort of a bigger picture of all the different you know, sort of components to it. Cause I, you know, Comcast might come. I, you know, I've seen certain things uh, emailed to me about, hey, we have this low income program to help out low income people. We helped out a hundred people last year, you know? Great. Things like that. I mean, that's, that's useful. That doesn't really tell us the need out there. Maybe there's 500 people that needed it and a hundred got it. So you know, it's sort of thinking more of a, uh, a more clear picture and assessment. That might give us, you know, that might give us insight on whether we now, we need to focus on this as an issue or not. Um, even a business perspective, we, we might hear it from Even a business perspective, we, we might hear it from Comcast. We don't necessarily hear from the business community. Maybe economic development thinks, hey, we'd land this great, you know, business here or whatever. If we add this kind of service to provide them, but you know, we don't. So that's a prop, you know? So a more multifaceted, I think, approach to it, a little broader approach that sort of looks at the different components. You know, schools, businesses, low income, you know, the community, what, just basically a broader need assessment. If there's an easy way to do that, I don't, you know, I don't know. But that, that's what I would look for.
Yeah, I, I think that certainly is pretty easy. I would, I'm sorry. I didn't know that council doesn't receive these and they're not marketing pieces. They're actually heat maps of where there's service and there's not service. And Quest, which isn't Quest anymore, I'm drawing a blank, Century Link has big heat maps of their business servers and where they're able to serve large businesses, tech, all that stuff. So I'm, I'm getting a consensus then that you want to build onto this original with this added information. Okay. All right. We're going to go with that. Okay. Sinsley, is that clear for you? All right. Thank you. Cool. Okay, next up we have public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I will ask that all persons calling in observe the same decorum of the city council meeting held in person. Looks like we do have some folks in the queue. So there'll be a three minute time limit. I'll ask you for your name and address or name and ward, and then I'll let you know when there's 30 seconds left and you'll probably hear my phone timer go off when you're at zero. And I'll politely ask you to wrap it up. All right, Mr. Clerk, general public comment?
Yes, first caller with the last four of three eight two one.
All right. Good evening, caller three eight two one. You are in the meeting. If you press star six, you can unmute and we'll get your time going. We can see you and you're unmuted, three eight two one.
Okay. Hi, this is Celia Greenman. I'm in Ward Two. I just wanted to commend Andrea and Kathy on their work on the fishing line proposal to the city and to Jeffco Open Space. It's an important issue and I've sent some additional information to both my council people. The, I, for, in my opinion, the signage is the most important component of this. I would also like to see that if on the signs, that there is some way to contact a person if you see an animal in distress, that there is a, a contact number and a person who might be able to be dispatched on a, a pretty quick basis. The other thing is that I think volunteers, that you will get a lot of volunteers for this project. And I was, was thinking that perhaps Lakewood Parks could be involved. Earth Day would be a good place perhaps to, to advertise this problem and to sign up some volunteers to either walk the lakes or to just go out on a regular basis. That's, uh, thank you very much again for putting this together. It was very impressive.
Thank you. Thanks for calling in.
All right, next we have seven three six zero.
Good evening, caller seven three six zero. You are in.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. This is Cindy Barroway, a Ward Two resident. Tonight, I'd like to express my deepest appreciation of the West Metro Fire Rescue, our Park Rangers, as well as the Lakewood Police Department and the many other first responder agencies who, who so quickly and efficiently managed the Bear Creek Lake fire yesterday. As Mayor Paul said earlier tonight, it's the power of partnership and yesterday was a great example of the power of partnership. I'm proud of that partnership that West Metro Fire and the Lakewood Police Department have shared over the years. It's something we should be very proud of in the city of Lakewood and throughout Jeffco. Both those organizations hire and train true professionals who provide so much for our community and our citizens. I hope that our city council recognizes these two, these two organizations and also applauds them for their public service. Additionally, I'd like to give a shout out to the city of Lakewood staff. These employees work daily to ensure that Lakewood is a great place to live, to work and play. They're respectful, creative and dedicated employees who deserve the same return from our elected officials. I hope you'll join me in thanking them for all that they do every day. And then lastly, on a personal note, this is to Sergeant Dave Hoover on his retirement after 38 years of the Lakewood Police Department. Dave, thank you so much for your exceptional service, your caring heart and your willingness to help those throughout our community. Enjoy your retirement, Dave. Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. Hope you have a good meeting.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Rome, anybody else with their hand up? So I'll let those folks know if you're listening and you'd like to make general public comment. Please press star six. To star nine, star six. And I just, I see some folks in the queue and I think they're the same numbers that called in, yeah?
They are. And the others were our LAC folks.
Okay, cool. So we will go ahead and close public comment and certainly appreciate the follow up on the fish line. And then we've had a lot of retirements of a lot of longtime employees and police agents and certainly Sergeant Hoover, who said goodbye last week, as well as Agent Manzanera. So there's always these wonderful people that we tend to build relationships with and we always wish them the best as they move forward into hopefully some fun. So next up, we have the emergency declaration, which as you have all become very familiar with, is a continuation with a check in. So Mayor Pro Tem, I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor, I move to extend the declaration of disaster in the city of Lakewood, Colorado, resulting from the coronavirus slash COVID-19 pandemic pursuant to section 1.27 of the Lakewood Municipal Code, originally declared by proclamation of the Lakewood City Manager on March 17th, 2020, extended by a majority vote of the city council on multiple occasions. And by this motion, extended again until February 22nd, 2021, unless earlier extended or terminated by the city council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all right. Please cast your votes. That passes 10 ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been made expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first readings, which does not tonight. While we have our approval of minutes. So I will go ahead and ask the clerk for a, to read the consent agenda to the record.
Yes, item 10 approving minutes of city council meetings for the city council study session meeting, January 4th, 2021. And then item 11 approving minutes of Lakewood Advisory Commission meetings. We have executive committee meetings for October 7th and December 2nd, 2020. And then full commission meetings for October 21st, November 18th and December 16th, all of 2020.
Okay, so I will open public comment on any of the minutes, I guess, that are part of this. And so kind of rarity, if anybody would like to comment on the minutes. I don't see anybody. So I will close the public comment on that and ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
I move for the acceptance of the minutes of city council and the Lakewood Advisory Commission, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion. Second, any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes on the consent agenda. And that passes, looks like 11 ayes and zero nays. Thank you. Okay, so going into general business, one housekeeping item, a scheduling item would be to call for a special meeting. As we're trying to get caught up, we have two first reading ordinances that were originally, I think, on the schedule for the 22nd, which would have made five second reading ordinances. So the idea would be that we do that at our March 15th study session, but prior at 5:30 PM, if amenable to council. These two second readings would be the budget amendment to provide matching funds for the Colfax Safety Project grant and then authorizing the sale of the Westland Town Center. So it would be the continuation. And it would then give us the opportunity to meet with our attorney as requested in an executive session. So I have asked the Mayor Pro Tem to have a motion to schedule this. And that way you all don't have to come in and try to sign papers. And it makes our clerk's job easier and your lives easier as well. We can get it posted and of course it'll be on all of our information fronts. So with that, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, can I get a motion?
Yes, I move to hold a special city council virtual meeting on Monday, March 15th, 2021 at 5:30 PM.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. I just need some clarification. The special meeting for March the 15th will be for two second reading ordinances, correct? And then we will also go into an executive session for the Westland Shopping Center prior, two weeks prior to that. Is that right?
So Counselor Johnson, thank you for that. I'm going to defer to either Mr. Goldstein or Mr. Rome. I don't have our full schedule in front of us. I'm just looking at the attachment for the March 15th. So let's get you clarification on that.
Thank you.
And I have it. You want me to speak up? Okay. So yes, February 22nd is the 5:00 PM executive session for Westland Town Center. And so that item follows up the first reading that evening at the regular meeting. And that moves that to what we're proposing there on March 15th special.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I believe we have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Okay, that passes 11 ayes and zero nays. Great. Thank you all very much for that piece there. Okay. All right. So next up, we have a discussion about our city council code of conduct. And at the retreat, we discussed kind of just our whole group dynamics. And, and you know, certainly there's a lot of passion on this body. And, and sometimes things can be challenging. But the request was made that we start to do a better job monitoring and looking at our code of conduct as well as developing a code of ethics. And so, you know, currently at the, it was mentioned that leadership was to take this on and discuss these things accordingly. And so that's what we would like to do tonight, or certainly what I would like to do tonight. And it has, you know, just in strict terms to do with some allegations that were made about staff and staff doing things that were discriminatory towards people in a ward based upon looking at Lakewood article. Those statements were made and the staff produced the chain of emails that said that Ward Three was reached out to and had the opportunity to participate in looking at Lakewood. And, and there was not a cohesive response from the two ward members. And so when you look at our code of conduct, there's two areas. And one is under conduct in public meetings in general. And that is practice civility, professionalism and decorum in discussions and debate. Difficult questions, tough challenges to a particular point of view and criticism of ideas and information are legitimate elements of free democracy in action. And the second part says, this does not allow, however, council members to make belligerent, personal, impertinent, slanderous, threatening, abusive or disparaging comments. And the other part of, of the code of conduct is dealing with staff, avoid public criticism of individual staff members. So certainly those things were directed towards staff. And Counselor Springsteen, I want to give you the opportunity, now that you've seen those emails that were sent, if you wanted to address any of this.
Well, you know, I mean, I guess the first thing I would say is that what I was talking about was what my constituents had concerns about. And I'm not quite sure why you're making this a personal statement from me. I was setting forth concerns that my constituents have expressed to me. So to that end, if you want to give me the floor about this, I've been trying for months to talk about life and death issues of justice reform in Lakewood and protecting our police, city and citizens. The council will not allow even one minute of discussion on this important issue and won't add it to the agenda as I validly requested. More evidence of how my constituents have been systematically silenced. But you have chosen to use our precious council time for petty bashing of Ward Three yet again tonight in a retaliatory way that I can't really explain, but people can see. You continue to demonstrate the discrimination against my constituents week after week. On the 25th, I brought up an issue that my Hispanic constituents are concerned about. Their elected representative being silenced on issues that are important to them. They've expressed their opinion that members of this council have weaponized certain voices of color for hidden racist agendas while only pretending to care about inclusivity. They have pointed out that your words about diversity ring hollow and are steeped in hypocrisy as you exclude and attack their only voice on council. And on the 25th, I mentioned one example of silencing Ward Three, which was excluding our ward from council corner in looking at Lakewood for my entire term on council. So instead of examining the real issue and considering my constituents' concerns, city leadership has awkwardly attempted to deflect responsibility. And, you know, there's no explanation as to why Ward Three wasn't asked to write for the next three issues of the paper or why staff could not find a way to reach a city councillor who lives five minutes from city hall and is on a meeting every Monday evening. I have multiple examples of correspondence with city hall the very week you say that it was impossible to reach me. But, you know, apparently, I mean, this, this impromptu sort of kangaroo court situation we have going on here is not going to be a situation of due process. I mean, I, I can't put on evidence, are we having a trial here based on, you know, what somebody's opinion of what I said was. You know, I, I got to say that Dr. Martin Luther King said that we know through painful experience that freedom is never voluntarily given by the oppressor. It must be demanded by the oppressed. And injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. My constituents are demanding that I stand up for freedom and justice, and I plead again for your support in this endeavor. We can work together toward that. But doing this kind of thing where you single out a councillor is not, is not working toward that. I effectively advocated for my Ward Three constituents because I promise you that their councillors will be the ones writing for Council Corner, the next issue of Looking at Lakewood. And then, you know, the, the last thing I'd like to address there is that I would ask why we're not addressing tonight the fact that that, that threats against one of your fellow councillors has been encouraged and has been received this past week. And I, I'd like it if we could at least agree that we will condemn calls for injury to other councillors and their families, because that's, that's, that's just not right. And, and so I hope that, you know, we can find a way to work together, but, but continuing to single one person on this council out for punishment is not the way to do it. So that's my response.
Just for clarification, Counselor Springsteen, did you receive the emails requesting that you participate in the Looking at Lakewood column?
I did not see those emails that week. I did not, I have looked back through my emails. I did not see an email that I received on May 11th. I never erase my emails. And, um, so that's a question mark why I didn't receive that email on May 11th. In looking back through my emails, I did find an email that was forwarded on May 22nd about the same issue. It was from a staff member who, um, never communicates with us. And so it's easy to overlook an email like that. Yes, I did receive that email apparently, but did not see it at the time and did not know I had received it. But that does not explain why there weren't further efforts to reach out to me. I spoke with several staff, several police staff, the city manager, many, many people at the city that week. I was reachable. I have multiple text messages between myself and the city manager that week. I was reachable. And, um, you know, if we're going to concentrate on one email that went into my spam folder and I, I didn't happen to see, that does not explain why our ward was not asked to write for Council Corner for the next three issues. And in fact, this last issue, we, um, we crossed over into a new year and Ward Two was asked to write for a second time, and Ward Three had not been asked. So I understand what you're saying. There was an email, there was some effort at some time to, um, to ask us to write. However, it was not, uh, an effort that was followed through on. And I am just asking that our ward not be overlooked in that way. Now, this is something I am asking on behalf of constituents. It was a question I got on behalf of constituents, and I did not know the answer to why we are being silenced in multiple ways. This was only, only one example. And, um, I have a whole laundry list of other examples. And so on behalf of my constituents, I brought this to the foreground. Now, you know, we, uh, criticize each other and, um, other, I mean, there, there is criticism that happens when you're part of a city council. Uh, I certainly get my fair share of it. So uh, I think that to single out one question that was brought up as some kind of criticism that is against the code of conduct is absolutely ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. And so I think that the way that this looks to the public that you all really need to think about, because people are taking notice of what you're doing, singling me out like this, and what, what that really means. I mean, that's irrelevant to me. You're singling me out. What's relevant is that by doing that, you are hurting my constituents. You are hurting Ward Three. And that's, that's not okay. That's a whole section of this city that deserves a voice and deserves respect and deserves to be heard when they have questions, which was why I brought up the Looking at Lakewood. I did not do it in some kind of, um, nefarious way to try to hurt somebody's feelings. I did it because people had questions about it, and I think that's reasonable.
And so I'll just, there's some folks that want to speak, but I'll clarify to your ward again that you did receive two emails. In 2018, January was Ward Five.
I received one.
March was Ward One, May was Ward Four, July was Ward Three, September was Ward Two. In 2019, January was Ward One, April was Ward Two, June was Ward Five, July was Ward Four, October was Ward Three, and November, there was a greeting from the city council for Thanksgiving. And then in 2020, January was Ward Five, April was Ward Four, June was Ward Two, and September was Ward One. So certainly the same amount of communication that is sent to everybody is received, and there's never been an issue. So I'm going to go to Mayor Pro Tem, Skilling, and then I have Counselor Vincent and Labir.
I'm going to keep this, uh, brief and to the point. We were tasked with that, our planning session, we were tasked with enforcing the code of conduct. The council has also decided that it wanted to have a, a small group or workshop to decide whether we need to do any updates on the ethics, what we need to do. We also talked about a team building exercise for us as peers and colleagues, how we can work better together. Counselor Springsteen is correct, there's often a lot of criticism, certainly at each other. We could probably all do better in our civility towards one another. However, we're talking about one discrete issue, and this issue is directed at staff. And I can't imagine a more insulting thing to say to staff than to not just insinuate, but to make the express call that they somehow prohibited Ward Three from participating in our paper and did so somehow because of the Hispanic population in Ward Three. To think that a staff member would ostensibly be accused of being racist and to do something intentionally against the council and the, and the ward is beyond the pale in this particular instance. And that's why we were asked by council to enforce the code of conduct. Now granted, there is no enforcement, there is no teeth. All we can do is discuss this, and so we're discussing it. And we've, I requested the emails after Counselor Springsteen and the city manager had a back and forth discussion at our last regular meeting. I requested those emails, we have viewed those emails. Two, uh, two emails were sent to both, uh, Ward Three councillors. One of the councillors did respond, said that there would be a discussion amongst councillors. And I'll let that councillor discuss that. But there was certainly enough outreach. There was no effort to intentionally silence anyone from Looking at Lakewood. I mean, period. End of story. That's what these emails show. Um, and I want that to be clear that nobody in staff, not the city manager, not Stacy, not anybody that participates in Looking at Lakewood, was intentionally doing anything against Ward Three or its councillors. So this isn't anyone singling anyone out. This is our only forum to when something goes beyond the pale and crosses a line. We all know, we're all entitled to our own opinions. We're all elected officials, nobody's superior over the other. Your opinions matter as much as anyone else's. But in certain circumstances, this has to be called out for what, for what it is, and it was a incorrect statement that was made. And I would expect tonight that the record be set straight. We all make mistakes, but we've seen it now. That was not true, what was said. Nobody intentionally silenced anyone. That is all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Counselor Vincent?
Mayor Pro Tem said it well, so I really don't have anything more to say. I just want to make clear though to the community that Counselor Labir and I were called, I believe, three days before, over a holiday weekend to, if we could possibly write an article, because Ward Three had not responded, and we did take it upon ourselves to go ahead and do that article. So it was nothing, um, nefarious, I guess, that we did it. We were asked and we did obliged. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Labir?
Thank you. You know, I was just going to make the same point. As far as bringing up Ward Two in January, I mean, that was the regular sort of, uh, order, uh, in which we were typically doing, uh, our Council Corner thing. However, we did do a special one in the summer, uh, as Counselor Vincent said, in pretty short order, uh, you know, after this, this incident. I also, uh, thanks Skilling for helping distill, I think, sort of the heart of this conversation, which I was just going to reiterate. I think the main point about this, uh, is that really staff discrimin, you saying staff, Counselor Springsteen making a comment that staff was essentially discriminating uh, against her and the ward. I think that's what the main issue is about. And as far as silencing Ward Three or Counselor Springsteen, I think quite the opposite has actually happened. I think a lot of latitude's been given, allowing people to vent and talk, and I think this conversation is just another example of that. It's a little awkward and a little uncomfortable, but I think at the same time, this is really the mechanism we have, is just to have this uh, conversation and everybody say what their perspectives are. And we've certainly heard yours, Counselor Springsteen, I know. And I think a lot of us have been a bit quiet on our own perspectives, but I'm happy to share it at any time.
Okay, so I have Counselor Bida, Abel, and Gutwine.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that Counselor Springsteen does not speak for me, and by the same token, I, I don't endeavor to speak for her. I have not had any problems with any, any way that, uh, city staff has treated me, uh, in, in in my time, my time on, uh, in office. They've always been respectful and, um, done everything they could, did everything I've asked to, to help me. This was an un, you know, a regrettable situation. I made the decision that as far as my portion of the letter, that I wasn't going to write it because we were in the middle of a lot of other things, and I didn't want to just put something in. I wanted it to be quality. So I was going to let it ride. That was for my, my part. And again, I don't, I don't intend to speak for Counselor Springsteen at all, but I, I don't share her, um, concerns as far as uh, any discrimination against my ward or my constituents. Uh, I, I will say that I do everything that I can do to give Ward Three a, a voice. I don't agree that they don't have a voice. Uh, and I, I do everything I can to represent all of Ward Three. You know, when we talk about my constituents, my constituents consist of about 30,000 individuals that live in Ward Three. So, uh, I just wanted the record to be clear that, uh, with all due respect, I do disagree with Counselor Springsteen as far as how I've been treated. That's all.
So I lost track because a bunch of hands went up, so I'm going to go off my top. So Counselor Abel, Harrison, Gutwine, and Franks.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this has happened after a fashion before. I noticed after a couple of months, uh, at one time that Ward One wasn't in its normal rotation. And that was my fault. I should have noticed that we weren't there and weren't being invited, uh, to write the column. Some months later, uh, the ward that had written, uh, their column when Ward One should have ran, uh, did another one. So I called Ben and I said, "Hey, Ben, we've been skipped over." And, uh, within just a few days, Ben had us plugged into the very next rotation, as did the staffer that runs the thing. So part of it is our due diligence. We need to watch and be aware of when we're supposed to, uh, be the featured show of the month. And it was, and, and again, it was, uh, just a matter of saying, "Hey, don't forget about us," and they put us back in. Like much of the code of conduct, and by the way, we're not going to just add a few things to the code of ethics, Mr. uh, Skilling, we don't have a code of ethics. Uh, we'll be putting that together from scratch. The, uh, the other thing I wanted to say is that like nearly everything in the code of ethics, it is a self-driven requirement. The code of ethics put our, puts our standards out there, and it's more or less up to us to make sure we follow those standards. And as I said a couple of weeks ago, I've been guilty of a couple of really minor violations. I think as you look, uh, if everyone followed the mayor's instructions and reread the code of conduct, I would imagine nearly every one of us that are here tonight noticed a phrase and thought, "Oh, no, I blew it." It's not there for punishment, it's there to set a standard. Now certainly, it is up in, in most cases that are involved, uh, involve meeting-type activity. And if, uh, the mayor pro tem, uh, says something that I don't think is correct, I'm not allowed to just break in and say, "Hey, wait a minute. You can't say that," or the truth is, uh, that's up to the mayor. The mayor is there to police this thing and say, "Gee, Charlie, don't interrupt, uh, Mr. Skilling," or vice versa. So, and there, there are minor things like that. Of course, it does require, we have a mayor who's aware of the thing, but I believe after admonishing us to read it this week, he, uh, reread it again and again himself. So we just have to stay on top of our own act. And that code is there to give us an example. And if we fall off track, then the mayor or the city manager or someone could say, "Look, you missed it, you blew it." And, and get on with business in, uh, in an orderly fashion. So, um, that's, that's about all I wanted to say, is that we had, and we faced the same scheduling thing in Ward One. I guess you'll notice from the way the mayor read those publication dates by ward. Uh, it's not one, two, three, four, or five. And it's that way for a reason. Sometimes some people are absent. Some people would rather not write one month and write the next. There are just a lot of reasons, and staff does a really good job trying to balance and keep track of what appeared to went. So I think we need to all back away and give staff a little more room, breathing room, give each other a little more breathing room, and understand that the code of ethics is there for to encourage, or code of conduct is there to encourage us to do the right thing, not to force us. not to force us. I don't think you can legislate behavior that way. So, thank you, Mayor, for listening.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. Gutwine and Franks, that's how I wrote it down this time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the biggest issue that I have with how things happened is the public calling on the carpet of a staff member was probably the part that we wish would not have happened that way. If we have issues with staff, we've been told as counselors that our right way of handling this is to start with the city manager and/or the mayor, talk about staff with them. If we have problems, then they will help us, you know, figure that out. But if we're not gonna try to do that, then, and then try to have a public beating or a public admonishment of staff in this meeting, I don't think that's appropriate. And, you know, so we all mess up. Every single one of us have messed up somewhere along the line. But we've got to go back in and we, if we ask staff, how can we remedy this and/or can you tell me when I should have done this? I'm sure that they will be very helpful. But at the same time, it's not staff's job to keep hounding us about answering an email or answering a telephone call. They have a deadline that they're working with, especially with looking at Lakewood. Once we've gone past that deadline, they've got to go on to the next ward. And I'm sorry, Anita, that you didn't, and Mike, that you didn't, you know, get involved there. I don't think it had anything to do with silencing of Ward Three in any way, shape, or form. It was simply a deadline for an article that needed to be filed. And I believe that it's our job to make sure that we watch our emails and keep up with that. Thank you very much.
So I have Counselors Gutwine, Franks, and Johnson.
Thank you. I'll also be brief here. I think a couple of points I want to make. First is that, as was mentioned, the code of conduct is mostly a pretty squishy document. There's lots of things like encourage or avoid. So it's just, it's not an enforceable document. There is one section of this that has different language, and that is the piece that we're talking about. It says, no personal attacks of any kind under any circumstances will be tolerated. And so to me, this is, this one rises above, and it's different than, you know, the other recommendations that have, you know, language that just say encourage or focus. It says it won't be tolerated. And again, there is no way for us to enforce this. And, you know, the people that really hold us as elected officials accountable are the voters, of course. So this gets, you know, into kind of a gray area. But I think that as a council, we adopted this document, and we've kind of agreed to this as the rules of the game. And I think that based on our conversation at the retreat, it's important that we hold all of this body accountable to, you know, we can encourage each other to be respectful, but I think the language in here is clear that the personal attacks rise to a different level. So I think that's really why we're having this conversation. And I just want to reiterate again the facts, and that is that our council corner process is that a staff member reaches out to council by email and gives you a deadline. And then we, you know, council responds with the council corner article. And in this case, what happened is staff reached out and there, you know, we already heard about the response. There was kind of a response that they'd get, look into it, and then there was, there was no response. And so there was no article. So it's just really important that it is crystal clear that this was not staff leaving out Ward Three. So that's the, and I just want to also make sure that the community knows and understands. We have a large staff, and we have people that work in all different departments. And our police, for example, wouldn't remind us about, you know, the council corner, or the city manager wouldn't remind us about the council corner. There's a dedicated person that works on that. So if one of us was to have conversations with different members of staff, they're not, you know, they're not all working on the council corner. Two other things I just want to clarify. One is, I'm really concerned to hear about calls for injury. I don't know what that is a reference to, but that's really concerning to me. And, you know, we need to take that seriously. So I, I'm not sure what the, who was calling for injury of a council person, but that's absolutely not acceptable. So I, you know, I'd like some more information about that. And then the final thing is, I just want to make sure our community understands. We have a process for items on the agenda. We are able to, all of us are able to submit forms to get an item on the agenda. And so I believe, we, Counselor Springsteen did submit some forms. And those items were slated for the retreat, and we did discuss them at the retreat. So that was my last point. Great, thank you.
Okay, so I have Counselor Franks, Johnson, and Springsteen.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I just wanted to echo, I think that Counselor, Mayor Protem, Skilling sums it up perfectly for me. It's a discreet issue, and this is the forum to discuss it, and I agree with all that he had said. I just wanted to vocalize a couple of concerns is that, you know, it's important that we all watch our words. And why I think we're very focused on this is because folks who watched that meeting, the last meeting, may not watch tonight, and they may then have this perception that there is something, and that never gets corrected if we don't get in front of them. There's no mechanism for us to correct that if those folks watching did not, are not watching tonight. So that's a concern. Once that misinformation gets out there, it is very hard to undo that. I wanted to make sure that the community is aware that council has a direct response system. If we've got questions and concerns, we're able to feed those into the system and that it makes sure that if we need to verify something, we need information, we need to report something, that's a way to get that into the system, have that be a recorded event, and then we can track that. So certainly that is something that can be done. As to the threats, certainly also wanted to speak to that. I'm someone who has had a threat made to me via email. And so I want to encourage that that is reported. I immediately contacted the city manager and the chief of police and made sure that that matter was addressed in the proper way. So those should always be, that should be taken through the proper channels. And I want to applaud the city manager and the chief of police. That was handled so professionally and so discreetly in a way that kind of took care of the issue, but respected everybody's privacy. And the last thing I wanted to just note is that as I work a full-time job, my primary method of communicating with all of city council or folks who are on a committee or commission is via email. So it is important, I don't have often time, the, I'm not gonna be able to pick up a phone, and I'm certainly not gonna take, so email is my primary method of communication. And as an example, right now, I'm trying to schedule a Housing Policy Commission meeting and still have not heard from all members. So those of you who have responded, I appreciate that. But I have not heard from all of you. We're gonna have to move forward with scheduling the meeting. And so I just want to make sure that's very public, that all of you that are on the Housing Policy Commission, thanks to those who have given me your availability. But for those who have not, or the person who has not, you need to send that in, otherwise we will schedule that at a time that works for the other five. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. We all are living in a very difficult time for our country and our city. And we all live in a tense political environment. In my career, I have found that when there is interest in the demise of anyone, that it brings a melancholy to all of us. It's very sad. Thank you.
Counselor Springsteen?
I just wanted to address a couple of things that came up. I'm confused about what people are talking about, about a personal attack or personal accusation on somebody in particular. Because what I said was that my constituents said to me that they had concerns about why our ward was being treated differently. That is not my opinion. That is the opinion of people in my ward who have spoken to me. And so I think that that needs to be distinguished here. And I don't, you know, I mean, this is me advocating for my ward. And I'm not gonna stop doing that just because you all want to have a witch hunt whenever I do it, you know? I mean, this is what I was elected for. I'm going to relay to you things that are important to my constituents that I hear. And I'm sorry if it hurts people's feelings, but we should all have thick enough skins to be able to hear things that the public has to say and be able to deal with it. You know, there's been a lot of concern in my ward over equality of our ward and, you know, me being kept from participating in things that I should be able to. And so for instance, you're talking about these requests for council action that I made, apparently the right way in writing. And then it gets added to an agenda where everybody knows I was not able to attend. For the second year in a row, the retreat was scheduled on a weekend I could not attend. So that is another example of silencing my ward. And, I mean, I have example after example like that. I was kept from participating in the city attorney selection. I was kept from multiple instances of being able to participate in this council, and people noticed this. And so I am relaying to you their concerns and what they notice. And, you know, I mean, I am tapped into the Hispanic community. I'm sorry, but there is a Hispanic community in this city, and they have a representative, and they want me to, and I represent everybody in my ward, but this was a particular thing that my community wanted me to bring forward. And so, I mean, the fact that you guys want to beat up and beat up and beat up, I have never had an orientation. Did you know that? I was the only counselor to come on last year. I've never had an orientation. And one of the things the policies and procedures provide for is that there will be an orientation provided to new city counselors. Every two years, there will be training on harassment and everything in the city code. That's never happened. And in fact, I have, when I first came on council, I asked the city manager if we had any kind of support. And she said that her staff was what would support me. And so, you know, to me, support, and the other thing everybody's glossing over is, okay, if I missed an email, how do you explain that for the next three issues of looking at Lakewood? I wasn't contacted to write. So I'm just trying to bring these issues out. I don't have any real communication with staff. I've been pretty much isolated as a counselor, and my constituents don't like it. So I'm just trying to communicate that. That's all. And you know what? I think it's really, it's really sad. There are so many super, super important issues that I have tried to talk to this council about this year, matters of life and death, like I said. And here we are spending an hour on Anita bashing. I don't get it. What a waste, 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 waste of time, waste of time.
Counselor Harrison?
Let me be the first to offer. Anita, if you would like to have some sort of lessons on how to be a counselor, I will be, I'm probably one of the, Raimi and I are probably the ones who have served the longest. I would be very willing, as I know Raimi would, to meet with you and go over every little thing that we understand about process and how to do things and whatnot, and see if we can't get, you know, help get around these. I don't think it's fair to continue blaming things on staff when we need to take our own problems in our own hands. So would you be willing to let Raimi and I help you with that?
Yes, absolutely. I'd look for any wisdom that you have. Thank you, Counselor Harrison.
Okay. So I appreciate everybody's comments. And just to kind of summarize, and unfortunately, to add to some of this also, we have a personal responsibility as leaders in the community. And, you know, we're not people that have a congressional staff who can do all kinds of stuff. It's a lot of us day in and day out. And we have an incredibly dedicated team who cares about this city. And you could only imagine, as a civil servant, to even hear that you're being accused of racist-type activity is devastating. And it's not fair, it's not right, and it's not going to be tolerated. And going further to that, this mention of orientation, we've gone through this to where there's documented proof of emails that went out trying to engage you to meet with staff to do this scheduling, and you never responded. So I think what is important is the communication with your constituents, at least on an honest level. And to make an assumption that somehow you were held out of the city attorney discussions, that's not factual or accurate either. So you certainly had every opportunity to participate. So I don't know, and this is a disconnect. And we've seen that words matter. We saw it over the last few months more than ever. Words matter. And so we sign up for this, and we can deal with the arrows and the sling, everything, but not our staff, that's not their job. And so just to reiterate, there was nothing nefarious. No actions were taken by the staff to do anything racist or to keep anybody from communicating with their residents. And so I think I'll leave it at that. And the Mayor Protem said it very eloquently, and that's what it is. So I would apologize, just on behalf, I will apologize to our staff that they had to endure that, and that it's not okay, and it won't be accepted. And it will be called out at every time if it happens again with that type of accusation.
So reports?
Sir? We'll start with Ward Two. And go two, one, five, four, three.
All right. I would just like to invite everybody. Wednesday for our Ward Two meeting from six to 7:30, we are going to have representatives from the police department and also Mayor Paul will be there. You are probably aware that we've had some issues primarily on Colfax. And so some members are going to talk about that, some crime on Colfax and action items that are taking place. So that will be a very open Zoom meeting. And even though it's happened in our ward, it did happen up and down Colfax. And actually, what happens there really does affect the perception at least of the city. So we would welcome everybody and that's all I have. Thank you.
I just want to thank Police Department, West Metro Fire, all of our staff, all the great work that you all do and for dealing with the fires yesterday. And look forward to seeing everybody at the ward meeting on Wednesday.
Thank you, Ward One?
Well, Charlie and I had our ward meeting this last Saturday and Commander Mike Greenwell from the Automobile Theft Task Force came. And his presentation is phenomenal. He is happy to come to any ward or any group that would like to listen to what he has to say. His information is profound. Thank you, Mike.
Good evening and thank you for that, Raimi. And, you know, our speaker was just tremendous. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. The Denver Water Board is doing their underground pipeline for Moffett Tunnel water. Look for a lot of construction over near Young Field and 20th and just north of there. Also, the trucks are coming and going at a pretty good speed from the staging yard at 20th and Nelson. Keep, if you're driving by there, keep that in mind. And we have, I dropped the sheet. We have Cottage Park at 110 South Cody, the two former historic buildings that we had to tear down because of disuse, I've heard contamination and other things. But now they're torn down. We're ready to start the development or at least look into the development. There's a short survey available at www.lakewoodtogether.org/cottagepark to learn what the possibilities are and to put in your two cents worth as to what you want to see there. So it'll make a nice little pocket park. It's in an underserved area and people in the neighborhood are excited to see it moving along. So thank you very much.
And some pretty cool designs out there, right? Some pretty cool conceptuals.
Amen.
Uh, let's see, that was Ward One. Ward Five?
We had a wonderful Ward Five meeting on Saturday. We had a discussion by two of our CAT team members about what things you need to do to make your house safer. And I learned lots of really interesting things that I had not even thought of before. It was very timely information and lots of good questions and discussion with our residents. And then I'll let Dana take over on the second half. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. And, yeah, and then after that discussion, we also talked about our council priorities that we had discussed during the retreat and got some good feedback there. And of course, then opened it up just to the community for questions and concerns. And one thing that I just wanted, one of our residents brought up that I wanted to share with all of you is just that a lot of the information about vaccines and COVID is all being promoted digitally. And just that there's some folks in our neighborhoods that, you know, don't have access to computers or internet. And so there was, and this may have already happened, so I apologize if it has. But the suggestion was, could we put some information in looking at Lakewood about, like, with a phone number that people can call if they do not have internet access? So that may have already happened, but I thought that was important to share. And just if you know a neighbor who, you know, is eligible for the vaccines, if you can share information with them, I'm sure they would appreciate it. And a couple other things I wanted to share is that, you know, another thing we talked about at the retreat is just about the importance of affordable housing. And it sounds like we may want to do a proposal for the housing commission to take a look at that. But I just wanted to share some information that I got from West Metro Housing. And there's currently 3,462 people on the waitlist for housing, Metro West housing in Lakewood. And that number doesn't, you know, it doesn't reflect everyone that needs affordable housing because those lists have been closed since May. And then I also wanted to share that their housing choice voucher program, which hasn't been able to open up for a couple of years now, gets over 1,000 applications a day. So I just want to highlight the importance of affordable housing in our community. And, you know, I know this is something that's important to all of us and see if we can figure out how we can, how we can help. Because as we all know, there were, there were no affordable housing allocations for the year of 2020. One other thing I wanted to share is just that I read in the news that one piece of the new, the American Rescue Plan, which is the relief bill, does include, it's planned to include $5 billion in emergency assistance to help secure housing for people experiencing or at risk for homelessness. And this is planning, planned to go to local jurisdictions, including cities and municipalities. So I hope that we will discuss the opportunity for a regional approach at the March meeting, if this does come to fruition. That is all. Thank you. And, oh, I'm sorry, I do just want to thank Agent Weichart and Sergeant Duriza for being at our meeting. And then I would be remiss if I didn't say just a huge thank you to West Metro Fire and the Lakewood Police Department. That was just really scary to see our, one of our most beloved parks, you know, up in flames over the weekend and have neighbors getting evacuated. And I'm just really thankful for the tremendous heroes that we have working for our city and our county. So thank you for your service.
Word Four, Mayor Pro Tem, Counselor Franks.
I guess I'll go first. I wanted to make sure everyone is aware that we have our Ward Four meeting this Saturday, Zoom meeting, 9:30 to 10:30. We'll kind of update everyone on the annual planning session, kind of the priorities that we went through. We will also review the results of a survey that we put out to increase the meeting effectiveness. We were kind of talking about how can we make sure that we, you know, engage more people in the community? So we'll share those results. And then we'll also have an open forum for any Q and A. Did also want to let folks know that we have openings on the Planning Commission, one for Ward Five and two at-large positions, Board of Appeals, Historic Preservation, Noxious Weed. You'd be surprised at the level of expertise that comes out for noxious weeds. And so that deadline for all of those is March 1. We're on a little bit of an expedited timeline. So wanted to make sure everyone was aware of those openings. Also Lakewood Sustainability Awards, nominating a sustainability champion. It's a thing I'm really passionate about. So if you know somebody that's done amazing things in the community, be sure to nominate them. And did want to obviously thank all the fire departments who responded. I was out doing errands very close to there, kind of by Coyote Gulch Park and got to see that a little more up close and personal than I would have wanted. But certainly appreciative of all the work that went in to bring that under control. And no structures, I know there's been some questions. Last word I had, there was no structures lost. I think there was some confusion. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll just join all of that. That was perfect. Thank you.
Word Three?
No report.
Um, I just wanted to report that I've met with some of our disabled constituents trying to find ways to improve their mobility. Have also met with some homeless folks to talk about some of their issues. I am, you know, regardless of what this body's going to do, I'm going to try to put together a civilian review board in this city. And so I have been meeting with constituents about how to set that up and activists in other municipalities about how they have gone about that. And then I continue to work on legislation at the state level with Representative Harrod and other representatives regarding ketamine. And, you know, one disturbing fact that we uncovered this week is that waivers are being handed out knowing that there's a 30% intubation rate in some, with some districts. And they're citing to literature with up to a 63% intubation rate. And I'm not going to stop on that issue until this state takes a hard look at that because we're going to kill people. All right. Thanks.
Okay, so I don't have a lot. We are actually seeing some businesses open, which is really cool. I know there's a couple new in Belmar, a new donut shop and there's a new coffee shop going up in Ward Five. And one of our Hispanic-owned businesses is doing a grand reopening in Ward Three on Thursday night, Body Perfection. And Ward Two, sorry, so it's right across the street in Ward Two. So Sharon will certainly be there. And I know I've invited Representative Tipper as well to try to join us. And it's, I guess the business was in Ward Three, now it's in Ward Two. But, you know, this will be kind of the first live grand opening or reopening that I've been to in a long time. But it'll be safe and socially distanced and should be a lot of fun. It's at 145 South Sheridan Boulevard. That's coming up. The legislature will be back in next week, so look out. But there'll be a lot of different things flying around as far as transportation, as far as certainly criminal justice, things that might affect our jail and a lot of different things. So we'll be, certainly, I think that committee will be very active and engaged as we move forward. And then we've talked a little bit about the Heading Home Group and should have some good data on some different things in early March that might help lead us in a better direction as far as if we're going to maybe find some sort of wraparound service sheltering opportunity. And I know there's official word for it and it's not shelter, but I'm drawing a blank. So a lot of, lot of stuff going on. And again, thanks to all of the first responders. I think at one point, one of the fire tweets was that there was like 20 engines there and over 100 firefighters. So it was certainly, certainly a sight to see if you look at some of those pictures. And just goes to show how fast things can change. And if you remember Colorado Springs a few years ago, I mean, it was, it tore through a whole neighborhood. You have cedar fences and so, I mean, really thankful that it didn't end up worse. And we got to be super cautious going forward. With that, I don't know, Mr. Goldstein, do you have anything like to add tonight? Mr. Rome, anything?
Not this time. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Attorney, is there anything that you'd like to add for the good of the order?
Not this evening. Thank you.
It's nice to see you.
Yeah, I will be sending out a report later this week.
Okay, great. All right, well, that will do it for us tonight then. And that'll conclude at 9:56 PM. And we are off next Monday for President's Day. So we'll see you following Monday. Take good care.